This is your weekly, uh, Black Redeemed.me reparations PhD Town Hall Meeting. We're gonna start with some praise and worship.
Uh, stepped out of bail, I did a ditty bop. I had to tilt my hat at the city cops. I walk away free 'cause I'm innocent. And when I walk, the whole world owe a nigga wide. We been at the gas station all night. We been at the gas station all night. They done had the bag waiting all night. Tell them that it's lit, bitch, we on fire. Ay, praise to the most high. Ay, praise to the most high. Send it praise to the most high. Praise to the most high. Devil want a nigga show. I beat that nigga thousand times in a row. Couple weeks ago, he thought he threw his best shot. All I'm looking at is Twitter playing friend of foe. Cloud chasers need the relevancy. All talk come from me, relevant MCs. None of those guys are relevant as me. Guess what that means? I'm on a whole nother league. Wait, don't stop, let's tell another story. What the fuck happened to rap? This isn't for me. Never did I ever think I would see the day. Rap niggas telling the cops to come for me. They try to turn me to a cold fella. All they help me do is get some more millions. All I see is free toys, free toys. Homie, I was in Miami on the short chilling. I got a whole new chick. We on the internet, she fucked me like she off a bean. I'm out in Jersey and I'm ballin' like I'm off the team. I bought a Ford, it's a Birkin or it's off the lean. Stepped out of bail, I did a ditty bop. I had to tilt my hat at the city cops. I walk away free 'cause I'm innocent. And when I walk, the whole world owe a nigga wide. We been at the gas station all night. We been at the gas station all night. They done had the bag waiting all night. Tell them that it's lit, bitch, we on fire. Praise to the most high. Ay, praise to the most high. Send it praise to the most high. Praise to the most high. Soon as I get my masters back, they want chatter. Now I'm independent, niggas want fended. White labels trying to turn my black folk against me. Been selling weed, that nigga dough to fit me. Tell my trappers get blooming bags ready. We finna fill them bitches up with Mad Reggie. Take them to the block, sell them at exclusive price. And if they ask why it's trash, least the bag heavy. Devil want a nigga soul. I beat that nigga thousand times in a row. Ballin' on a demon like a pick and roll. She ugly, then I gotta hit her with the whip. Still up in this bitch going hard, nigga. Running through these bitches like a yard, nigga. I'm watching complex for the tucks, nigga. 'Cause this is everyday struggle, fuck mall, nigga. I got love for 'em till they count me out. Niggas mad, I spoon they bitches like a router bow. I see niggas trying to kick me when I'm down and out. And I came in here with a purpose, I ain't round for clothes. Illuminati trying to get me, nigga. But I'm the one that gotta spare like a Britney, nigga. Through the hot and cold, I would never sell my soul. And if I gotta die for that, I'm dying Christian, nigga. I spent four seasons at the Four Seasons. I might even flex just for no reason. Got a penthouse in DR and PR. I call it PH balance and it's Puerto Rican. These niggas don't like me. I'm feeling Gucci, man, and I'm so icy. Wear these niggas out like a white tee. My comeback rate's super spicy. Stepped out of bail, I did a ditty bop. I had to tilt my hat at the city cops. I walk away free 'cause I'm innocent. And when I walk, the whole world owe a nigga wide. We been at the gas station all night. We been at the gas station all night. They done had the bag waiting all night. Tell them that it's lit, bitch, we on fire. Praise to the most high. Praise to the most high. Send it praise to the most high. Praise to the most high.
So today, we have a very special guest. Miss Hollinsworth. Let's see what's going on with the young lady. Let me, uh, figure out how to stop sharing this string right quick, like the Georgians say. How you doing today, Miss Hollinsworth?
I'm well, how are you?
I'm doing pretty well, too, pretty well. Uh, where's my uncle at? Can you speak to my uncle today?
No, actually, I didn't hear him today.
Alright, alright. Well, we had expected, uh, an extremely special guest, uh, Chairman. I mean, the great organizer. The wise man. Friends of the African Union Chairman, Herschel Daniels. And so, uh, sent him the information. He's not here, so the show must go on. It's a weekly show. And what we do is talk about reparations every Tuesday on this channel, Claim Your Inheritance. I mean, because, you know, we popularized it. You understand? We birthday those. That was a moniker that was, uh, invented by Queen Mother Moore back in the sixties. And so, it was popularized by the United Nations back in 05 or something like that. You understand? So they had, uh, sent out a report telling the world that descendants of slaves are a special people who deserve reparations, who deserved to be restored because they were stolen from their land, stripped of their identity, mixed and matched out of their families and thoroughly tortured and abused for many years. Same with the, uh, Autarchist Holocaust. That was a travesty. Ninety-seven percent of Native Americans were murdered. A hundred percent of them were black. So a hundred percent of the ninety-seven percent were black. Ninety-seven percent of Native Americans were murdered. Three percent of them survived and surrendered and were relocated to reservations. So, uh, they're pissed a bit more than we are because we, we, we integrated, we decided to integrate and things of this nature. So we have, uh, dealt with a measure of success that autarchist population has, has not, generally speaking. Okay, let me, uh, I gotta find this, uh, link right quick to post it in the chat. Be right black with the... Alright, here we go, boom. There we go. Now, what's coming forth, uh, in the future has been postponed one solid week, one solid Sabbath. Instead of the twenty-third, it's been postponed to October the thirtieth. It is the impeccable legendary record of a legend in the hip-hop game. His name, he goes by the name of The Dungeon Dragon. That's his name. And so, his album, Extinction Level Event, will be released on October the thirtieth instead of October the twenty-third, as he announced. Moving forward, what we're going to do today, we're gonna visit some questions. Very highly important questions developed by the Impeccable. Miss Hollinsworth! And so, I, 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 I'm, I'm really considering, um, interviewing her about these questions. Uh, so let me, uh, pull, see if I can find them, the questions, and, uh, pull them up here. First. First, as the Georgians say, first. There we go, I found it. And then what I wanna do is see if she is available for an impromptu interview. Hearing none. I'm gonna have to wait for other special guests to pop up on us, pull up on us. And, uh, expect that at any moment, 'cause I know how these Gentile men do. They like to be fashionably late. You see? We got Brother Lance, clearly watching. We got, uh, Brother, uh, Miguel, clearly watching. Now, they've pulled up on us. But I do want to interview them and go through the benefits of the beneficiaries. What they will receive from this brand of reparations that we like to call Harvest Freedom Act. You understand that? So, that's how that works. Now, I'm rubbing my hands together because I feel some money coming. We got Big U on the horizon. The big, the big U, the Big U on the horizon. And, uh, that type of power doesn't go unnoticed. We got White One Hundred on the horizon. Power. And I already represent pretty Tony world with bullying and sniping. You dig? That's important. All of these things are important because as I peruse the scriptures, I notice things in the scriptures that allude to uh, organized friends and organizations. You understand? And so, I noticed that they are integral in prophecy. So the only way that they can, uh, be on the winning side of prophecy is to knowingly realize that they are part of prophecy and align themselves with the winning side of prophecy. Big U's a Muslim. I'm not too sure if he, uh, accepts the Bible very much. But the Quran does say, "Accept the book, people of the book and the book itself." If you have any questions and you're confused about the Quran, refer to the Bible. And accept the chosen people of the Bible aid in the system, aid in the bit in, in their legal endeavors. So since Big U is all the way a hundred percent legal, or ninety percent legal, then, uh, we gotta honor, uh, the men who have worked for their people their entire lives. Now, this is a contention that exists between hood warriors and United States government warriors. So we apologize for, you know, you vets and the United States government for completely neglecting your people, your entire career. We apologize to you on your behalf for not, uh, letting you know that the United States government does not have your best interest at heart in those times, you know, years ago, in the seventies and eighties and things of this nature. But I was only, uh, five, five, twenty ages of five and sixteen in the seventies and eighties. So I wasn't smart enough to show you that information. But I'm speaking on behalf of six hundred plus African-American organizations. And I am the youngest elder of the Friends of the African Union. The eldest elder of the Friends of the African Union is in his eighties. So I'm apologizing on his behalf and the rest of the elders in the Friends of the African Union and our associations, which are six hundred plus organizations, which includes the UNIA and Cobra and many, many, many others. So if no one's gonna come in here, then I would have to interview you, Miss Collinsworth. The only person here, I have to interview. I got this thing set to, uh, when people come in and leave, that it makes a sound. So I'm hoping not to hear some, uh, sound if she leaves without answering my question. Yeah? Okay, so we looking for Lance and Miguel. Pull up. Mrs. Hollinsworth is busy ignoring me at the moment. And what's going to happen here is that, uh, I'm gonna look around to see if anyone's available. Okay, Herschel Daniels, go to his page. Okay, it was sent to him. And he has not seen the invitation. That's highly unprofessional of you, old man. You're one of my favorite uncles, brother. You can't be late to the party. Alright, let's, uh, look at here. Share this to a couple of locations. We're gonna get right into it. We're gonna get right into it. I just wanna share this a couple of places here. Let me share it in, uh, the group. Reparations due to, there we go. Bam. Now, it might be, uh, few people might, uh, pop in later. But once again, let me start on the questionnaire developed by the Impeccable. Miss Hollinsworth. Alright, so what we got here? We got some messages, hold up. Not, okay, okay, gotcha. Okay, Miss Hollinsworth. Stay, uh, great, and, uh, do your thing. Uh, she's just monitoring my professionalism to be sure I'm not acting crazy. So now, let me pull up the questionnaire, here. And let me share it. Share it, okay, here we go. Now, I usually don't do this, I don't usually don't share the questionnaire, but you guys are real special. Black Redeemed.me interview questions. And this is for the Weekly Town Hall PhD, reparations PhD. I mean, we the best that ever did it. Just ass while the boss. Now, we know exactly what to do. And let me tell you a, a little bit of stuff that we supposed to do, that nobody else knows. Ice Cube don't know this, he asking us what to do. And you, you clowns are dragging your knuckles and not helping them out at all. And you're trying to bang on them. That's the funny stuff. How do you bang on a OG, a triple OG at that? Now, here is what needs to be done here, okay? Make the... Okay, no, no, that's not what I'm talking about. Okay. Uh-huh, okay. Yeah, 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 that's all I wanted. I'm gonna tell you guys, I'm gonna treat you guys like Big U. Okay, first thing, you got to want to be righteous. That's the first thing you got to do. You got to want to be righteous. And then you have to reckon, we have to be recognized by the United Nations and, and the African Union, which is less important than the United Nations. So this is what T.I. tried to tell you guys at the Revolt Summit years and years and years ago, I mean, last year. And he was trying to tell you that we need a nationality and I was trying to let him know that that's a technicality that really isn't important. The most important thing is the promotion of HR forty and the Harvest Freedom Act. So he took a vacation and, you know, kind of felt like, uh, we were being, um, a little not, uh, not welcoming to him. But he's definitely welcome in the, uh, in the, uh, the fighting community, the, I guess you would call it, I don't know, the woke community or something. Because he, that's what he does. He fights, he organizes with people who do, who will fight. Um, like, uh, the real estate guy, I forget his name. And, uh, Killer Mike and so many others. It, it is, it's just ridiculous. So he's definitely in the fight. Definitely, that goes without saying. Okay, so, so once we get recognized by the United Nations, right? Which is only, takes a week or two to do that. Okay? Then, we need to join the Kellogg's-Breton Agreement and the Copenhagen Agreement. Okay? Just look these up. Kellogg's, like the cereal. Breton, B-R-E-T-T-O-N Agreement. And the Copenhagen Agreement. You should know how to spell that if you're intelligent. Then, what we do is make the donations, the donation, the fundraiser, make the fundraiser that we have, uh, in the, in the chat. We gotta make that go viral. Okay? Because we're the only, uh, reparations brand that knows how to perform reparations without a glitch. After we, uh, do that, after we do that, once it goes viral, then the, the youth will have the power. So the power is in the hands of the people and the people are guided by the youth. That's what you don't understand? And so, the youth will pressure their parents to pressure the politicians. The politicians run the police that you're begging the police not to shoot you in the face. They won't shoot you in the face if you link up with the, uh, militias that we have around here. Uh, one is, uh, led by Tazadak Shaw Bay. Shaw. S-H-A-H. Bay, B-E-Y. He has, uh, the, the best militia. And then you have, of course, everyone knows the, the viral militia, which is NFAC. So they will preserve and defend our rights. We, historically speaking, we haven't had anyone to preserve the rights that are unalienable to us. You understand? Okay, so, that's how that part works. Now, the key to all this, okay, let, let me, let me, let me, let me backtrack one step. Okay, so Carl Anderson, the granddaddy of intelligence, taught us that the first floor of, uh, freedom and, and control of, of your environment through politics is an economic base. So we're trying to raise twenty million for that economic base. The second floor is to buy politicians. The politicians on the third floor control and keep at bay the police so that they don't randomly shoot people in the face. The fourth floor is our own media. So that's, that's happening all over the place. You got Tyler Perry, you got Rolando Martini. You got, uh, 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 Drink Champs. You got, uh, you've got, uh, Gilly the King. You got Devon. Uh, I forget his name, Devon. I mean, it's just too many to name. You understand? You got all these skit actors on YouTube who are comedians, hilarious comedians. They are too, are our own media. That's the whole purpose of YouTube is to be your own media. So now, the fifth floor is our own education. So, uh, we've determined that, uh, primary, primary, uh, primary sources education is a necessity in our community. So we're gonna go with that. You understand? So that's what the educators, the experts in the field have determined that primary sourced education is a necessity in the black community in order to know our history. Now, we got the, the guest of the evening. We got my, my uncle. We got the chairman of the Friends of the African Union in the building. He goes by the name of Herschel Daniels. How you doing this evening, sir?
Uh, sorry, I, I've been on calls, uh, uh, that, uh, for, you know, we're in the, the countdown for November ninth and the, uh, uh, review of human rights in the United States by the United Nations. And so, we got caught up in the, uh, calls. And so, I apologize for coming in late uh, to talk about, uh, our six trillion dollar, uh, proposal for, uh, uh, the executive. And to explain, uh, the difference of that, uh, talking about, uh, that, that, uh, proposal.
No, not a problem at all, brother. I mean, uncle. Uh, so, uh, let's, let's, uh, take a look at some things here. Uh, let me finish this last key point. The key to all this, from the perspective of the Harvest Freedom Act, and, and, and just, just to be clear... I have been, uh, motivated, inspired, and partially trained by this great man on our line right now. Herschel Daniels. So he's an incredible organizer and, and, and gets the people together and they, and, you know, people being together with, uh, genuine love for each other tells each other how to do things and what to do and, and how to make things happen. So he's put everybody in the same locations and I want, uh, if he could, after I finish this, to speak about the six hundred plus organizations that we're affiliated with. But the very last key to the, the Harvest Freedom Act brand of reparations, uh, F A U has their own brand of reparations, which is called the Black Folks Plan dot org. Go there, get yourself involved, make it go viral, uh, and put pressure on your politicians. But the very last key to this, as far as the Harvest Freedom Act is concerned, is that, uh, we want to remove the burden from the American taxpayer by using the New World Bank. So without further ado, uh, we're gonna have to get into, uh, the incredible, uh, organization and understanding and wisdom that I'm going to absorb and take notes about from the chairman of the African Union, Herschel Daniels.
So, uh, let, let me, let me give a couple of things. Uh, I'm a chairman of Friends of the African Union. So that, uh, if you go to Wikipedia and you put in Friends of the African Union, uh, you will get, uh, uh, who we are. We are an organization that was started under the call of Ambassador Ali, who was the first ambassador and the most effective ambassador, uh, from Africa to the United States. And so, uh, she in twenty eleven brought us together as people of African descent, uh, in the United States. I noticed at the meeting that the B one hundred, uh, the Divine Nine and a lot of other infrastructure wasn't there, but a whole bunch of people, uh, who are, were Pan-Africanists, uh, who had never lived on the continent like I had, okay? Or people, uh, who were talking about, uh, uh, Marcus Garvey, okay? Who had never, uh, worked in, uh, the, uh, original Garvey Organization. And as an ex diplomat for the Republic of Guinea, uh, in the Senior Honorary Council, I determined to create an organization, uh, around the African Union, which is the organization of the, uh, nation-states of Africa, uh, fifty-five member strong and representing one point three billion people on the continent. Uh, now, we are not part of that organization directly, uh, because, uh, we are not a nation. Okay, and yes, I know people say, well, yes, we are. Well, internationally, no, we're not. Okay, uh, but we are the strongest, baddest, biggest, wealthiest blacks on the planet who earned one point two five trillion dollars versus all of the nations of Africa who earned, uh, less than three trillion. Uh, but what we have to do is get ourselves organized. And so when we started this in twenty twelve, uh, we're part of a national coalition of six hundred organizations who are built around, uh, the Community Reinvestment Act. And currently, now in twenty twenty, uh, as of this date, we have a hundred and ninety-four billion dollars worth of federal bank-based community benefit agreements. Federal Reserve Banks, just like Sun Trust here, in December, uh, committed sixty billion dollars over the next three years, uh, for, uh, in these agreements. We just had, the newest one was with, uh, J P Morgan. Uh, so there's a hundred and ninety-four billion of these agreements. Now, you can go to your organizations, if you ain't heard about it, and ask them, okay, why they have not heard about. We went, when I had my, uh, sixth and seventh heart attack in twenty sixteen, uh, when we started these new round of agreements, uh, I went to all of them. I went to N A N, I went to N double A C P, Urban League and et cetera. We brought all of them into the place in terms of twenty seventeen in these agreements. In twenty eighteen, okay, uh, they hadn't moved on it. Twenty nineteen, we decided to move unilaterally on it in the black community and thereby we created the Black Folk Plan. And the Black Folk Plan is based on, uh, the authority of the executive of the United States, uh, to use Federal Reserve, uh, to issue new debt. And, uh, they have the authority of up to eleven trillion dollars that Barack Obama turned over to President Trump unused. And so in January twenty seventh, uh, when the United States was gonna be reviewed in its human rights at the United Nations, uh, we met with the U S State Department, uh, to begin the process of creating a public-private partnership uh, around, uh, the Quantitative Easing Authority of the United States. And COVID hit, okay? And so COVID hit, kicked our meeting with the, uh, United Nations and the United States back to, uh, November ninth. All right, and so now we're in that final stage of, uh, proposing that we're going to give the update in terms of the use of, uh, uh, proceeds, uh, with, uh, the, uh, uh, six trillion dollars. And the whole idea behind this, uh, plan of action, it does not require any congressional action. That's the, that's the key point. No congressional action. What it requires is, in the Universal Periodic Review of the United States in Human Rights on November ninth, is that we're going to detail that use of proceeds, uh, for, uh, people of African descent. And that six trillion dollars can be executed by executive order of the President of the United States. It's not like this, uh, Platten Plan that's being talked about, uh, uh, everybody's talking about. That's, uh, some five hundred billion dollars worth of, uh, of, of, of talking about. But rather, we're submitting a, uh, unsolicited proposal, uh, based on the, uh, uh, United Nations. Okay, doing a human rights. And as part of that, what we're submitting is the executive can enter into what's called a public-private partnership. And a public-private partnership is where you're bringing in, uh, something that is unique. And so we started out doing this in Philadelphia on, uh, January sixteenth. And we set it up, uh, through our agency, the African Diaspora Directorate and Friends of the African Union. Now, this was pre-COVID.
Let me, may I, may I ask you this? Are you able to unpack the public, the historical, uh, significance of public and private partnering? Because from my understanding, public and private has always been separate.
So in, in government acquisitions, okay, there is a law, uh, public-private partnerships. There's actually, uh, law about it, okay? And, uh, so we're using already established law. We're not using stuff that is, uh, uh, not already, has the rules already set down. And so under this, we are a qualified public sector entity, as private sector entity that can enter into a public sector contract with the U S government. We have our Duns, we have our SAM's dot gov number, you know, we have all the, the, uh, uh, the financials, okay? Uh, to, uh, do what we're doing. And then, uh, what we have is we've created the, the infrastructure so that, under the African Diaspora Directorate, uh, okay, that, uh, everybody can, uh, sign on either as an organization or as an individual. Okay, and so that they can participate in the, the, uh, program. And, uh, uh, again, it is based on, uh, already established law. Uh, okay, in terms of the Black Folks Plan, it's based on already established law that the president can execute with no congressional action. And he doesn't have to look around as like, where's the funding gonna come from? Okay, we already, uh, designated, like I said, we're coming to the table with bank-based agreements that are already in bay, in, in, uh, in, in fact, uh, with the, uh, 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 Federal Reserve Banks. And so the Black Folks Plan, uh, is, uh, uh, different than other plans that are out there that talk about reparations, uh, that, uh, they talk about that you have to get congressional action. Uh, we do not have to get congressional action. Uh, we're also based off of, uh, we came up the, with the amount, uh, based on, in, uh, two thousand fifteen, uh, where we took, uh, nineteen eighty-eight, where the United States paid reparations, uh, to the Japanese, uh, who were interned in camp, concentration camps. And we pro-rated that back to seventeen eighty-nine, the beginning of the United States. And up to eighteen sixty-five, and that turned out to be one point one five million dollars. And we multiplied that times the Africans in the census of eighteen sixty, uh, which in two thousand nineteen dollars turned out to be about five point two, uh, trillion dollars. And then we added on the economic damages based on, uh, the, uh, four hundred year Commission Act of January eighth, the law that, uh, commemorated, uh, four hundred years of Africans in the British colonies that became the United States, starting in August twenty-fifth of sixteen nineteen to August twenty-fifth, uh, twenty, uh, nineteen. And we added eight hundred billion dollars on top of that, which, that's how we came up with the six trillion dollar figure.
Awesome. Awesome. And, uh, I, I, I don't use that word lightly. Now, uh, tell, tell us how you, uh, how did you come to know about the reparations movement in the beginning?
So, you know, I'm sixty-five, sixty-four years old. Okay, so I've, I've been, uh, Garveyite for over, uh, fifty years. Okay, and so, uh, the act-
Your mind has always been in tune with, uh, elevating your people. And reparations has always been that, the, the, the ultimate goal of not only Garveyism, but the, the beginning of the Reconstruction Era. Eighteen sixty-six.
The, the, the whole idea, uh, that Garvey came in, most people don't understand that when Garvey came here, uh, to meet Booker T, and found out that Booker T, uh, was, was dead. Uh, but that, uh, there was a whole movement at that time, uh, internationally because of the, uh, First, uh, World War. Okay, that, uh, in, in that, that history and in that time, uh, that the first African nations, okay, uh, since eighteen eighty-five, uh, were being born, okay? Cause people keep forgetting, uh, that North Africa is North Africa, okay? It's Africa, it's not Arab lands. Uh, but they, they gained their, their freedom. But, you know, he understood at that time, uh, that, uh, the Sub-Saharan Africa, as we call it today, uh, that they needed organization and that Americans, uh, you had Americans coming back from War, War One. And these are internationalists. And so that's why he was able to build the organization, but that worldwide, you know, that was in the era from nineteen hundred, which was the first Pan-African, okay, conference. All that era wa- was in that era, okay? That was all in, in, in that time. And so from that, okay, which is why, you know, he was targeted, uh, because, uh, the Europeans uh, had finally conquered Africa after four hundred years. Okay, but, you know, what things that people don't understand is that it wasn't the Europeans who were the first invaders of the African continent. It was the Arabs. And, uh, seven hundred A D, uh, they took over Rome and North Africa. It was them who launched, uh, invasion in, uh, Europe in seven eleven from, uh, Morocco and, uh, the northern states in the Iberian Peninsula, which later would become Spain and Portugal. And that they ruled Europe, okay, and that, uh, uh, for nearly, uh, eight hundred years. And that when the Europeans came back to Africa-
That's what they referred to as the Dark Ages.
Well, the, 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 those Dark Ages in Europe, uh, were brought into the light by this invasion, okay? That, uh, uh, they, they, you know, the mathematics, the, the taking a bath, okay? Uh, uh, healthcare, all, all that came from the Arab invasion. Okay, it was the highlight of the Arab, uh, era, okay, uh, during that period. But, uh, after nearly, uh, a four hundred years worth of war, okay? And the last hundred years of, of pushing, uh, the Arabs out of, uh, the Iberian Peninsula, uh, Christendom took, okay, uh, in charge of what is now Spain and Portugal. Now, I've lived in Spain, okay, and I used to visit North Africa on a regular, uh, uh, basis. And so, uh, you know, the whole idea of, of that, uh, and the closeness be- between that, okay? But people unders- only thing they understand here in America, uh, because we don't know our history, is the European invasion of Africa. And it didn't happen like, uh, they think it happened, okay? But they have to understand that the Africans, for nearly seven hundred years, have been conditioned by Arabs uh, to sell their brothers, okay? Uh, because in, embedded in Islam is institutional slavery. Because, uh, the, uh, Prophet Muhammad, uh, was a slave trader, uh, slave owner. And, uh, and constitutionally, he's the highest ranking as what a, a good man in Islam, uh, should be. And so they don't understand that history. So actually, I introduced that, that whole history on, on the reparations conference that was held by the African Union in the United Nations in twenty thirteen. Okay, and so that, that actually was introduced in. Uh, the African nations have a conference center at their mission to the United Nations. And they had a meeting with those of us in the African diaspora in October twenty thirteen as they were, uh, completing their fifty-year unification plan called Agenda twenty sixty-three. And so I made sure at the table, that the round table that I was at on reparations that no longer just talked about the Europeans and the Americas, okay, as the, uh, major part. I made the explanation that there's seventeen million Africans who were imported to the Arab lands as slaves. And so the Arabs killed a hundred million Africans, okay, during their era of their wars, as well as the hundred million that were killed, uh, by the Europeans. So with that background, uh, you know, you go fast forward from twenty twelve, when the United States put out, uh, this, uh, policy, uh, for Africa, and, you know, I was there. Uh, when Africa told the United States, told Barack Obama, uh, we don't believe your coming African policy. Uh, because your policy, uh, if you're serious about it, uh, in a Ghanaian sense, Ghanaian minister, I'll remember this in that meeting, where he stood up and, and took the mic and said, if you were serious about doing trade with us, then you would not close the Trade Office in, uh, Accra. All right, you would not, uh, move it back to the embassy, if you were serious. Now, we're getting ready to go to China. And when they went to China, uh, China to defeat the United States rolled two one hundred and fifty billion dollar banks. Okay, and one of those banks, they rolled with, uh, Europe. They had forty-two percent and Europe had forty-two percent and rest of the world, you know, got fifteen percent. You know, China put together the, uh, the Brazil, Russia, India, China. Then they added South Africa BRICS organization to challenge the United States. And so we never could get the Obama administration to, uh, give up their, uh, human rights push, uh, for homosexuals. Okay, so our United States policy- Okay, so our United States policy, okay, always was uh based on homosexuality. And consequently, if you didn't adhere to that policy, okay, uh then uh you did not get uh the benefits of the United States' trade uh uh program. And so most African nations uh didn't. And so we lost out in the uh competing with China uh in that marketplace. And so that all changed uh on December twenty eighteen. Okay, the Obama uh African policy uh was uh replaced. And in November of twenty nineteen, uh five billion dollars of a sixty billion dollar rebuild of America's trade policy was set aside for Africa. And uh the key is that this is not executive action. This is law, right? It was passed in July of twenty nineteen as law. You know, from the House to the Senate to the signature by the president.
What's, what's that law?
It's the B U I L D. Yep. And it's headed by the State Department. It created a whole new infrastructure, finally gave America a sixty billion dollar fund that could enter into funding uh for uh projects such as what we're proposing uh in Africa. Uh, so what we're, what we're doing though domestically is our six trillion dollar reparations solution called the Black Folks Plan is a seventy-five year domestic plan for black folks that includes a one trillion dollar trust fund uh for households like uh the uh, it's approximately eighty billion dollars a year during that seventy-five uh years. Uh, but the trust fund is one trillion dollars uh for uh people of African descent uh from African slavery, because you gotta remember, there's three types of people of African descent in America. All right, there are those who are born of uh descendants uh from Africa pre eighteen, December fifth, eighteen sixty-five. And there's two classes of those. There's those who were born in Africa and have all African, no European. Okay, uh like Christmas addicts. And then there's those, okay, who were like Thomas Jefferson's uh children. Okay, were born of uh African um uh uh African European mother. A member of Thomas Jefferson's children were born of his wife's sister, a half-sister who was born of her father's rape of an African slave. And so those are, are, you know, we're unique people in that. And then uh we have the uh second is is that, uh, excuse me, the, the, the other i- is those from nineteen hundred. Okay, remember, those are two people that we're talking about, and those in nineteen hundred are those people who move into the United States uh as far, you know, like Colin Powell's uh parents, Shirley Chisholm's uh parents, okay?
Kamala Harris.
You know, uh, who are the global uh diaspora. Yeah, okay, uh, so the trillion dollar fund is for those who are born of the first to the history of slavery in America. Okay, uh, the two trillion uh is uh for housing. Uh, then you have, uh, because you know, it's for seven million houses, creates five million jobs, okay? Uh, because we know that the Department of Labor says for every billion dollars you put in housing, you create twenty-five thousand jobs. Workforce, four hundred uh billion in workforce money uh because we have to train a workforce of our poor school system that is trained adults, especially after COVID nineteen, uh who have no relevance in the workforce. Then you have three hundred billion for reentry for the brothers and sisters who are, are jailed and for those who are coming back in from addiction, uh from uh uh health issues and et cetera. Uh, so you need a reentry funding, and then you need to put four hundred, another four hundred uh billion in reforming our education system uh post-COVID nineteen. Two hundred and sixty billion for business. Uh, remember, we have two point six million uh black businesses that uh pre-COVID uh and less than two hundred thousand of those businesses had more than one employee. Uh, but that you have to look uh that th- those businesses together uh pre-COVID uh had uh maybe uh three hundred uh billion dollars in revenue. Our largest black business owned, uh, it has over six billion dollars in revenue. Uh, but you know, the majority of our businesses uh don't have a- any more than the owner as an employee. And don't forget that our leadership uh was responsible in part uh in our community, they turned back a hundred and thirty-four billion dollars in unused PPP money. Personal Protection Program, a hundred and thirty-four billion was turned back, okay, in the program. And believe me, I was knocking on doors, okay? Uh, to, you know, we, we, we were able to get, we, we were able to get CDFIs, Community Development Financial Institutions, to be authorized on the second round. And they authorized six hundred and seventy billion dollars and turned back unused a hundred and thirty-four billion.
On the second round.
All right, to- total first and second round. They turned it back, a hundred and thirty-four billion. We, we literally uh from the beginning. Okay, we were, you know, telling people, uh, because we were on the White House calls and telling our churches and nonprofits to get in on this, and they, they, they just didn't move. Uh, it's like opportunity zones. They didn't move because it was a, a Trump thing. Okay, they, they, uh, just like they didn't commemorate the four hundred years of Africans in America because he signed it into law. So we, in our program, it's six hundred billion for healthcare, two hundred and twenty point five uh billion for transportation, uh, three hundred and thirty-eight billion for environmental, two hundred and fifty-four billion for infrastructure, and uh two hundred and twenty-seven point five billion for global trade. And so tho- those are uh approximate to numbers that on November ninth we're now drilling down uh to use of proceeds on a regional basis uh based on the public-private partnership that we have, in fact, in Hamilton County and in Fort Coffee, Oklahoma, and the work uh that comes out of Philadelphia that we started on January sixteenth. So which area would be able to take advantage of this?
Let me uh introduce here, since you've mentioned, mentioned uh transportation. And so, um, Dr. Claude Anderson, I'm pretty sure you're familiar with that uncle.
Yeah, I'm familiar with him.
And he uh finally joined the reparations fight uh uh like this month. And so he suggests, uh, strongly suggests that we uh build a high-speed rail from Atlanta to Dallas with two stops in between. There will be uh Birmingham and Shreveport. So what are your thoughts on that?
Well, high-speed rail, okay, is a yes, maybe, okay, uh, but uh in terms of, of that rail uh between th- those communities in the post-COVID transportation, when we put this together, uh, this was pre-COVID. And post-COVID, okay, uh, we now have, you know, uh, transportation in the United States is gonna change because it matters on uh the air, air filtration of such a transportation network. And is it competitive uh to airlines? Okay, so airlines are going through a, a thinning out in post-COVID and transportation right now. Uh, so I would say that you would need to do a study to see if that works. Uh, because not the least of which, you're gonna run into problems right away. Okay, uh, so to see it, are you gonna run on CSX lines? No, you can't run on CSX and nor uh 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 NS lines. So you have to na- lay down your own lines in high-speed transportation. And so that's a heck of a right-away challenge. Okay, so that's, that's the number one thing. The right-away challenge is gonna be a heck of a, heck of a thing uh to flow through that. And in terms of uh, you know, that, that's my number one. Uh, if I was looking at it straight up, uh, is my number one thing is, is that what is gonna be your uh uh right-away challenge? And seeing it's a multi-state, okay, uh, and it's uh mostly Republican states. Okay, at the state level, uh, how are you gonna get licensee? Yeah, okay. And so, uh, and then the third, not the least of which, uh, if you're doing this within the context of uh the reparations uh status, all the reparations uh programs that I see from everybody else is based on congressional action. I don't believe in congressional action. Okay, I, I believe in executive action. And so you, you've got Joe Biden coming in, who's come around to, he's saying that he's gonna have to rule by executive action, even if he has the Senate initially. And of course, you, you know, that Trump has been uh uh administrating uh by executive action. Okay, and so, uh, you know, if, if his plan is context of, and like his other stuff, is not based on reality of the economic models uh that, that, that is in the real world right now. Okay, when you're talking about the world's three hundred trillion dollar economy uh and the United States' economy in that and participation, uh, show me how you're going to get your program uh funded. If you're depending upon Congress to pass a law of reparations in the trillions of dollars, look what is happening right now on this started-out three point five trillion dollars Heroes Act in a national emergency where over two hundred thousand people are dead. And where we're at in negotiations right now at about one point nine trillion dollars that they agree. And so, uh, and it's, it is problematical whether they're going to agree on, on, on that. And you wanna ask for ten, twenty, thirty trillion dollars? Uh huh, right. Like, like I said, uh, uh, the Black Folks Plan is based on what has happened. When we asked in January twenty-seventh uh to enter into this public-private partnership, it was based off of off-the-book financing. See, our debt doesn't become debt of the United States, it becomes debt of the Federal Reserve, our agents. And it becomes, because the law has already been passed. Barack Obama got sixteen trillion dollars worth of this new debt. He had the authority, so that's how he saved America. He spent four point seven trillion dollars of it saving America. And anybody who tells you the Federal Reserve hasn't been audited, uh, they don't know what they're talking about. Okay, we've got the twenty twelve audit of the GL uh did on the Federal Reserve. That's why we know what bank received what, and, and again, they paid it back, like he saved the auto industry, did the investment, got the money back plus interest, and made a profit. And we, we followed this model, we asked him for it, and Susan Rice said no. And I remember the meeting uh at the uh State Department. Where we made the mistake that we're not making on November ninth is is that, you know, we, uh, the, the people didn't know that had the uh ability to do this. So when you have Ice Cube talking about some five hundred billion dollars, they're gonna search for funding. Well, they just used quantitative easing, and they just put six hundred billion dollars out on the street for businesses and nonprofits. We were in those negotiations. We got it cut down to onboarding for at least, uh, you gotta ask for at least a quarter million dollars. They started out, you got to ask for half a million dollars. So now you can ask for it if you can uh need a quarter of a uh million dollars, and you can get a loan up to three hundred million dollars from this six hundred billion dollars of quantitative easing authority. And the banks only have to hold five percent of the loan versus under the normal SBA program, they own fifty percent of the loan.
Okay, well, you, you mentioned Ice Cube. Do, does, do you feel, I hate to uh speak like that, but do you feel that Ice Cube is coming from a sincere space?
He may be coming from a sincere space, but I don't know what the heck he's talking about and negotiating on.
Right.
See, most people don't understand the finance of America, right? So like when I say that uh uh I talk about the, the uh uh six trillion uh dollar plan, okay, uh, see this report to Congress's GAO? This is that report I was talking about. That tells you in this report uh how that four point seven trillion dollars was used. All right? And so i- if, if you don't even know about that, you ain't even talking about reality.
Okay.
All right, and I was on a CBC call, and they were talking, and I, you know, I asked the question that, you know, uh, uh, what about the six hundred billion dollar Main Street lending program? They thought I was talking about the Platinum Plan Main Street. Okay? They, two different things. What is out there on the street right now? The other one is nothing more than a bunch of uh uh of campaign rhetoric. Because I checked, when, when they talked about it, when, uh, and when Ivanka Trump uh created this, okay? So I went to check and find out uh where, where, where is it at? And, and there's nothing. They, they say in it, they will seek funding for five hundred billion dollars. I'm sorry, what, why are you seeking funding? Okay, all right.
Right, because the uh locations that you know that the funds are where, they, they can't tap into, right?
Well, i- it's a process, man. It's a process. Okay, if you, if you don't do the process, okay, if you don't do the process, then you can't access these funds. A- again, we come to the table since twenty sixteen doing a process in creating a hundred and ninety-four billion dollars worth of Federal Reserve Bank-based community benefit agreements. Now, my problem was is that I was recovering from my six
Oh, I, I, I'm sorry to hear that. Uh, one of those was
Most people die with first heart attacks.
Right, right. One, one of those were fifth term, right?
Yeah, yeah.
You, you feel better, you feel better than, better than ever now? You say, most people die from their first heart attack. You, you've had seven, so how's your, how's your
Seven heart attacks, eight stents.
Okay. I mean, how do you feel, how do you feel now?
I'm energized in, in what we're doing, okay? And, and what, what we're doing and what in terms of us as a people uh can do. Because what we're doing is in uh the creation and making people aware of that. And so then you go and you write your Your portion of the Black Folks Plan.
Right.
Okay, you write.
I got my, I got my portion. I got my portion written out thoroughly, now, now listen, uh, are you familiar with, uh, Big U?
Am I familiar with what?
Is, is, he calls himself Big U, that's his nickname, or state's name.
No, no.
Okay, okay, so, uh, I'm trying to lobby him to get the youth involved. I know you got a youth uh, program because you understand that the youth is, uh, has the power over their parents in order. And the parents have the power over the politicians. So I'm gonna lobby Big U to get involved with us in order to make this much louder than it is. So, so I thoroughly expect the Black Folks Plan to become a manifestation and materialize. Uh, a little before the Harvest Freedom Act because. You're going through executive action and we have to go through the Congress, and just like every other reparations plan is going through the Congress.
This, this is what we're doing, brother, okay? Uh, at, at the very least, we're going through that hundred and ninety-four billion dollars. Worth of Bank-Based Community Benefit Agreements, there is approximately, um. Over ninety billion of that easily, that's unused currently. Okay, and so, you know, the other uh, uh, has been used or is in process. So what we're doing at a street level, depending upon where you're at. Excuse me, uh, is that you can? Uh, you know, depends on the city, uh, wha- what's your focus on your cities?
Uh, the, my focus is to uh, invigorate the youth, uh, so I have.
No, give me a city, I understand youth, gi- give me a city.
So I really want to turn over the city that I live in, Fayetteville, North Carolina.
Okay, so, okay, so let's talk about North Carolina, okay? You, you're covered by JP Morgan, you're covered by Truist, so you're covered by seventy-five billion dollars worth of agreements right now.
Okay.
Okay, and so in terms of the way it works is that FAU would uh, create with your organization. A uh, joint venture called Friends of the African Union Smart Wise Community Reinvestment Coalitions. Of, uh, wha- what's your county?
Cumberland.
Of, of Cumberland County, okay? Uh, which would uh, be created by uh, Friends of the African Union of Fayetteville. So it's, it's always created out of the black community, all right? And so, but we create a coalition. All right, and that coalition then has the ability uh, to create an interest group. But the interests are always driven by black folk, so i- it's people of African descent. And then it's poor people, then it's women and people with disabilities and seniors and children and at-risk community achievers. First responders and uh, continuity of government at the neighborhood level and. People who subscribe to the teachings of the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King and his four phases. See, people think mostly of King and I Have a Dream or Birmingham, they don't talk about fifty-seven when he told. Uh, uh, he was in Ghana and the creation of the first Sub-Saharan uh, free uh, uh, African state. Or they don't talk about his Riverside speech a decade later, that, that's the one that got him killed, cause he started talking about the money. Okay, and uh, uh, community members and reentry who are at risk, along with cross-cutting topics, okay? And so what we would create in Fayetteville, okay, would be this coalition. All right, out of FAU Fayetteville in uh, your Columbia uh, County. All right, now, in the case of, of Philadelphia, uh, Philadelphia is both the city and the county combined. Okay.
You're out of Philadelphia.
Huh?
You're out of Philadelphia.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm in Hamilton County, Cincinnati, Ohio.
Okay.
All right, but uh, you know, we, that's where we have our public-private partnership with the Hamilton County Developmental Disability Services. Agency in fact, but we went to Philadelphia. Because it is a real large city, plus we went grassroots, the grassroots in this community failed. Okay, they didn't hang together. In twenty sixteen, when I told you I had my sixth and seventh heart attack, and we brought into our national coalition. Uh, NAACP, the Urban League, uh, you name it, uh, the Black Ministerial Alliance, uh, we brought in. Uh, over ten leading black community groups. And they, you couldn't tell that there is a thirty billion dollar agreement with Fifth Third uh, in the community right now. All right, and so, uh, we made a determination in twenty nineteen when I recovered. And you know, twenty eighteen, I had helped elect uh, Stephanie Dumas, the first black woman. Ever in the state of Ohio's history to be elected as a county commissioner. And so in twenty nineteen, we had prepared uh, to run and create this whole infrastructure that we have now. Okay, uh, and uh, we created that. And now in uh, uh, you know, January twenty, uh, January sixteenth, we launched in Philadelphia. Because we were working with a grassroots group. Okay, uh, grassroots, all right, down in the street. The groups that normally, they don't talk to them about the money.
Right.
And so that, that's, that's where we're at in, in Philadelphia, but that's the model. That we've created. Okay, to take advantage of uh, the, the whole idea. That when we, when we talk about it, and again, when people talk to us and they say, well, where's your, oh, hey. In twenty fifteen, we were the only black group who proposed this when they were deciding. The whole round of financing for the SDGs in the world, this wasn't an African meeting. This was the International Conference for Financing for Development of the World. And for the first time, they held it, okay, in an African nation, uh, the African Union headquarters there. And so we, we, we sent Queen Mother with, uh, to put it on the record, so when we talk about what we're doing.
Queen Mother Moore?
Uh, no, her, her, her apprentice, uh, Queen Mother Dr. Dolores Blakely. She, she was a handmaiden to Queen Mother Moore.
Okay.
Uh, but she, uh, uh, in the modern era with us, we put together the uh, uh, Black Folks Plan. Uh, for Africa. That is part of this Agenda Twenty Sixty-three, the Africa we want, a three trillion dollar plan for Africa. And so we introduced that in uh, uh, twenty thirteen. At the conference at the AU headquarters in the United Nations. And so we, we have, you know, now set this up. Uh, for this meeting that's uh, upcoming. Uh, based off of this model. Uh, okay, uh, where the opportunity is here. And covid has given us the ability to do the policy change, okay? And so we, we have a chance to change policy from the grassroots. Okay? And so, you know, like I said, uh, we, we've been working on that, we, we know. Uh, what the debt is when we started working in twenty ten, a decade ago. About what Africa's debt was and what our debt was. Okay, remember I told you, I, I was a diplomat uh, for the country of, of Guinea.
Okay.
And, and, and so my natural inclination is to go, you know, where. We could talk about where we can make systematic change. Okay?
And FAQ. FAQ from, uh, the community. Uh, due to the uh, uh, emerging awareness of, of black Native American. History. Is. Their uh, semantic of color of law. So their question is, you know, what, what, what are the legal ramifications of continuing to act, yes, to the pseud- uh, pseudonym of, or brand of. Quote-unquote, black. Uh, when clearly that brand of color has no standing at law. According to the legal definition.
Well, wh- where we're at is in the Indigenous Peoples' Forum. Okay, in twenty sixteen, we brought the issue of Native Americans and Africans to the table. Uh, in the United Nations and the Indigenous Peoples' Forum, and I tell uh, people who call themselves. Uh, Indigenous people of African descent. Uh, are you in the Indigenous Peoples' Forum that is recognized worldwide? Uh, through the United Nations, and if you are. Okay, then let's have a discussion, like the uh, uh, Maroons, they're there. Okay, uh, but if you're not. Then, you know, that, that, you can call yourself anything.
Right, that's what I keep trying to tell you. You know, it's all about what you're doing, it's not, uh, the label.
I- i- it's all about who recognizes you, so when, when, when we talk about, okay. Uh, uh, what we're at in Africa. Uh, I can point to that our first meeting was October twenty thirteen. Okay, I, I don't have to, you know, so if you weren't at that meeting and weren't part of that process. Uh, then you don't have any uh, say in that, that process. That is the governance of, of the continent right now, not real soon now. That's right now, now twenty twenty, we have the follow-up to this meeting in twenty fifteen. Okay, so now, now they've given us a path for having a connection to the Organization of Africa. Okay.
And that's November ninth, uh, uh, I'm gonna have to, uh. Beg this opportunity to be invited to that meeting with you.
It's gonna, i- i- it's happening every night at eight PM, where we, where me, I'm gonna have to go in a little bit, but uh. Uh, the, the key is, is that, uh, when we, when we're talking about that, we put this together. Back in twenty fifteen, okay, I want you to take this down, the Commonwealth of the African Diaspora, okay? Okay, this is the sixth region, all right, it's Coed Black, it's C O A D dot B L A C K.
B L A C K, okay, C O A D dot B L A C K.
Yep, it is, it is Coed Black, okay, Commonwealth of the African Diaspora dot Black. All right, and so that, that's, that's King DuBois. The old, it's, he's the nephew of W E DuBois, unfortunately, he, he transitioned last year. Okay, uh, but he was a, a like Queen Mother Dr. Dolores Blakely, uh, he was an Ashante. King, he was created in nineteen sixty-three to be the king of us. As an Ashante kingdom. Uh, okay, so they actually created uh, for us a tribe. Okay, later on, uh, decades later, but he was created as that, that leader. And what we're doing now. Is, you know, uh, we, we set up the organization. For the participation of people who want to participate in this process. Okay, and so what we're doing is calling for the creation. Of uh, this Kwanzaa. Of uh, the uh, planning for the Ninth Pan-African Congress.
Okay.
All right. And so that is the work that uh, Queen Mother and myself have put together. That will go public on the ninth, along with, uh, uh, again, it's one of the things that we take advantage of. These already established Bank-Based Community Benefit Agreements, and like you said, you wanna do North Carolina, that's fine. We're, we're, we're ready to support you.
Great, thank you. Uh, sincerely, and uh, I feel honored, uh, that you even uttered that sentence. But, uh, yes, sir, okay, so, uh, just, just, I know you have to run, so I, I wanna get a couple more questions in. Uh, uh, cause I, I understand this is the PhD, but uh, our audience is, uh, you know. Still in the fifth grade, so. Define reparations from your perspective, unpack that.
As, as I did, okay, uh, reparations is defined in the United Nations as a process. All right, and so we're following that, that process. Okay, and so, uh, in, in, in that terms. Uh, for me, it's taking the nineteen eighty-eight reparations process that was taken from. Okay, uh, the uh, Japanese and turned in World War Two. And it's a six trillion dollar deal.
Okay, so can there be reparations without transfer of land or property?
We're buying the land, yes.
To purchase the land.
Yeah, seven million homes.
Got you.
And, and, and you have to understand that forty acres and a mule thought, and, and the only reason we're, we're. I- i- is, was an army order of a army general in an army territory. Okay, that gives you, okay, the basis uh, for that, and America's biggest landowner. Who owns two hundred and fifty-four million acres of land is the United States Government.
Yeah, so that is antiquated and, and, and President Andrew Johnson repealed or reversed.
Yes, he reversed the order of one of his generals.
Which he, he has a right to do, so I don't know why people keep, continue to say forty acres and a mule.
Because, uh, again, same reason that they said that Mike Brown had his hands up, okay? I- in, you know, uh, again, uh, same thing that they said, uh, for uh, Joseph Blake. They don't mention the assault on the black woman, uh, that he was being arrested for. Yeah, okay, she is forgotten on his sexual assault. It's, it's the narrative that, that gets out there, okay, uh, that uh, leads us down this path. That's the narrative we wanna talk about.
Okay, what, what are your views on the previous reparations payments to the, to the slavers and? And, and Hawaii, like you said, mentioned earlier, and uh, the five-dollar Indians and so forth and so on down the line, the uh, Jewishers. Uh, I mean, you know.
The, the only reparations basis that we use. Okay, is the basis, okay, of uh, the uh, United Nations review. In twenty sixteen, when we had the United Nations Working Group of Experts on People of African Descent. And in their summary in twenty sixteen, that they said, the legacy of enslavement, racial subordination and segregation. Racial terrorism and racial in- inequality in the US remains a serious challenge as there's been no commitment. Uh, real commitment to reparations and to truth and reconciliation for people of African descent. Well, we have in twenty twenty, that, that start, in fact, uh, we have the state of California. Passed a law to uh, start a investigation in Philadelphia, we have the district attorney. Uh, who is willing to start a Truth and Reconciliation Commission, okay, and has hired staff to do that. Uh, we have a uh, reparations uh, uh, plan of action for six trillion dollars. Uh, we have a, uh, reparations, uh, uh, plan of action for six trillion dollars, okay? Uh, so, you know, that, that's our thing.
Okay, and as far as the American, this is the last two questions. As far as the American economy is based and it, uh, you know, it, all the other members of America, how would, how would they be affected by specifically black, black people receiving reparations?
It's be great for the economy. You gotta understand that in COVID, okay, even beforehand, but even it's great for the economy. That's why we structured it like we did, okay? Uh, because if you're building, okay, uh, seven million homes in terms of the ecosystem of creating jobs and the materials and et cetera, uh, yes, is there five million jobs created directly in the black community? But there's also a like amount in the whole American, uh, em- employment community, okay? And so, you know, it's great, it's a great deal for, uh, the American economy. It pumps into the American economy a great deal. But more importantly, it's something that can be done based off of already established, we're not having to establish new territory, and then COVID hit. And so the process has actually been used for two-point-one trillion dollars worth of, uh, quantitative easing authority already.
Final question, and then I'll give you the last words. Why are you so passionate about the reparations movement?
Well, a- a- again, I'm, I'm passionate about economic development. I'm passionate about that we, as black folk here in America, that we need to take our place, our rightful place, uh, eh, where we are at, okay? And the Treaty of Berlin of eighteen eighty-five, uh, unlike, uh, the, um, uh, previous leadership in the African Union, uh, who were teaching here, here in America that we need to be concerned about France, we are treaty signatures. We don't know our own history and know our own ability to be changed. We are still stuck in a victim's mentality. And so the understanding that will happen through reparations, okay, and truth and reconciliation is, is that we come out of a new mentality over the next decade. And so we have a unique opportunity to make this happen because of all that has happened, not only because of COVID-nineteen. In a hundred years, we've not had, uh, this type of change opportunity in America, okay? But more so, uh, with the, uh, death and custody of George Floyd, okay, uh, has created a global movement that if we don't take advantage of this, uh, we are about to lose a, a, a once-in-a-lifetime change opportunity. And if we don't, uh, do this, people like Black Lives Matter, okay, global organization will sell us out, uh, to corporate America, uh, for like Pepsi, sixty-billion-dollar-plus-a-year corporation, and their deal is four-hundred-million dollars? What?
Oh.
I'm sorry, okay, uh, you know, no, not, not this time. I, you know, in, in Ferguson, I was there in the Ferguson Action Network. And, uh, they kicked me out of the Ferguson Action Network, uh, led by BLM, uh, creators, uh, because I said, "Read the Attorney General's report," okay, on, uh, Mike Brown. And the whole reason why the officer was never charged is because everything about the case is a lie. All right, the popular, uh, hands up, uh, that he was coming, uh, you know, et cetera. And if we go down that route, just like if we go down the, uh, the reparations route has been espoused for forty years, uh, with HR forty, then we're being led down a path that is ridiculously not being able to be put in place because I'll leave you with this, if you're depending on Congress and the Congressional Black Caucus, then why don't the Congressional Black Caucus that has over fifty-three members now take five-thousand dollars from each of their multi, uh, their million-dollar budgets, hire a staffer to prepare the report? In Congress, they have a thing called the Congressional Research Service. And, you know, the Library of Congress? There's reasons it's called the Library of Congress, cause it's the library of Congress, okay?
Yeah, the information is there, bro.
So why, why don't, well, not necessarily, because even though it's a black librarian, we've been fighting her, uh, to have a black section, okay? And so, uh, uh, but the key is, is that if you're a member of Congress that has one of the biggest caucuses, why haven't you told the Congressional Research Service and the Congressional Budget Office to do a mark, mock-up on the bill? To find out, you know, uh, and so you don't, you don't have to pass HR forty. You, you, uh, do like the Republicans have done, uh, in managing when they're in charge. Okay, you've been in charge of the House. So last year, when you had this, this, this show and tell, this dog and pony talking about HR forty, well, please, okay, uh, you, you could have the, the mock, you know, right, right there. It's just like when the Congressional Black Caucus had their meeting in February, okay? Their emergency summit. And their emergency summit did not have anything that talked about COVID-nineteen. And by the way, Susan Rice didn't bring her emergency plan for COVID-nineteen, uh, to the table. We didn't hear about it too, it was politically expedient, uh, for her to do it, to slam the administration. Yeah, okay, but so, uh, that's my word. And like I said, uh, every night at eight PM, uh, in terms of, uh, next week, uh, till, uh, end of the year, uh, we have conference calls.
I'll be there.
Eight PM, I'll send it to you.
Thank you, and, uh, we love, we, uh, love you and we appreciate your, uh, diligent, uh, lifelong fight, uh, for your people. And we honor you, give you, your roses while you're here and, uh, so forth and so on, in the most sincere.
Let's get North Carolina done.
I, I, I'm on it, I, I, I will definitely be successful because I'm, I'm, uh, focused on, uh, your leadership, so I think you got it.
Herschel.Daniels@theafriendiaspradirectorate.org, all right? Herschel, H-E-R-S-H-E-L dot Daniels, D-A-N-I-E-L-S, at african-diaspradirectorate.org. I'm in LinkedIn, Herschel Daniels Jr. And, um, uh, Friends of the African Union is in Wikipedia. Uh, we're in the midst of transferring from a European, uh, web holster, and like I said, into our own. And so we will, uh, be fully up the Black Folks Plan. If you wanna read about the Black Folks Plan, you can go to blackfolkplan, uh, dot, uh, org right now.
Singular folk, no S, I tried to, yeah, I tried to put it in there this morning, forgot it. I forgot the, uh, URL, and I put black folk.
Black, Black Folk Plan, uh, dot org, uh, we, we're transferring to blackfolkplan.org, dot com and all that. Like I said, we're transferring it, uh, onto our own server farm.
Gotcha, okay, to the blackfolkplan.org or dot com, it, it, it comes up, pulls up for both of them. Uh, yeah, blackfolkplan.com. All right, so any final words, uh, for the meeting? And this was a highly successful and informative meeting. And I hope that people get involved with you, uh, just as I did when I first heard about Friends of the African.
Send it, send it to me, uh, they're, they're calling me, uh, in the prep, okay? I appreciate your time.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, bye-bye.
Well, that sounded, uh, quite prophetic whenever he says these things, uh, because we have a tradition from our ancestors that's codified that says that we will be more than conquerors. So the conquerors have stolen everything and coalesced everything into a failing system that, uh, tried to, uh, genocide the poor, and they failed miserably. And now, uh, we are here, repopulated and, uh, prepared to, uh, fight on all levels. And so, uh, we're gonna continue to truck along and try to get this thing done for the community at large. And hopefully you guys get involved with us, uh, go to Harvest Freedom Act or, or you, uh, blackredeem.me or blackredeem.com, either one. And, uh, you sign the, uh, petition. Uh, this will allow me to be a, the chairman of the bank that, uh, I have the backing and the blessing of the Friends of the African Union, uh, on. Okay, so we will be receiving these funds, uh, uh, when, when they come available. And then we'll be issuing them to beneficiaries of reparations. This has been, uh, an incredible experience. And this, once again, is the blackredeem.me reparations PhD Town Hall Meeting. We're gonna meet every Tuesday, tune in.